Also, the like link to the survey and the video. So. Do you all feel comfortable with? The agenda for today?
Yeah, that looks fine.
Sure.
Okay, great. Um, so maybe start with a survey because that's the thing we want to have go out first. And I think we can just all click on that and be able to edit right in it. Any, I only got two comments on the survey. One was. That the near scale for the questions about are you more likely or less likely seemed like it should be reversed so that. Like the five, the bigger number was for the sort of essential to like the, basically the bigger number was for spending more on the bond. That wasn't the way that person said it and the smaller number would be more like a no. And then the other comment I got was looking for. An open comment box, which we do have, but it was, I think it must have been not obvious enough. To. To people here, I see Marlena has joined us, so I'm going to promote her to panelists.
Actually on.
Yeah, that's great. Okay.
I'm here just trying to make a sandwich quick and then I'll get right to it. Turn my video on when I'm back.
With the, I wasn't sure when I looked at it, if you wanted people to like rank it or to say, yes, I would support this, but no, I wouldn't support that type of thing.
Which, which one the?
Dollar amounts.
The dollar months. Yeah. So. Um, let me just send Marlena, welcome. Glad you're here. I'm going to send you a link to the document that we're working off of. So that'll be, oh, actually I can, do we have chat capabilities in this one? No. Okay. All right. So I, Marlene, I'm going to send that to you in your, your Harwood email. And that way you can kind of just see the document we're working off of, and it has links and stuff in it. Okay, so. If we're looking at the survey. And we're going to, what section was that? Section.
Page five of seven.
Oh, weird. Oh, yes. Okay. So Jeremy had made a comment that. When I had it initially, I had it like all broken out into. Oh, what would you think about 40 million? What would you think about 50? What would you think about 60? And this was a simpler approach. I think I was kind of curious to see like what were people's breakpoints, but. This is a simpler approach. So what do you guys think about it? Is it doing what you feel like it should?
Yeah, I think I, go ahead, Christine.
Well, I was gonna say. We didn't really talk about $70 million last night. Wasn't 60 million the? Top number?
It is. I think I.
So.
I was just trying to like, I guess, almost like.
Example.
Further so that. We weren't bumping up against the high ceiling, but I, that's just gamesmanship and I was waiting for someone to call me on that.
I, I would suggest using the numbers that they showed us last night.
So we'll get rid of that guy.
I mean, I do feel like there's. There's probably a psychology here. You know, I mean, maybe it's.
That's true.
Along the lines of like where. You go to a car dealer and they show you like 72 options and then you feel really like frugal, like if you cut off three or four. So if the thing that we think is best is absolutely the most high end, I think that's maybe hard for. You know, people, because people, people like I consider myself, you know, somewhat frugal as a. You know, as a good thing, right? Like you don't just always take the high price. You hag a little bit, you think about, you try to find the fat and cut that down a little bit. So I don't know. I mean, this is my psychology, you know, it, it, as before, when I was going to talk before you were talking, speaking, Christine, I was just saying, I bet there's some sort of. You know, theory to, to these questions and, and I'm not suggesting that we should try to manipulate that. But I also wonder if, if having what we think the best choices has absolutely the top end. Might make it harder for people to vote for that. I don't, I mean, or to select it.
I'm good either way, and we, we could phrase it differently that basically says like, this is everything our educational leadership asked for plus. You know, I think we should put even more in, you know, something, it's just a chance for, yeah. So I'll take the F grade, but I'm also happy to take it out. I did feel a little bit like, well, should I really do this? But I, the idea that I knew that the numbers were going to come in pretty close to 60. So. I sort of didn't, I was hoping to see, have people see like, we could have gone to 70.
I get, I mean, hearing that I'd be fine either way, really.
Nobody, I mean, nobody actually tagged up. I'm not sure how closely people read it. So. All right. So we're a little bit ambivalent about that one right now. Just leave it for now.
Sure.
I feel super, super flexible. All right. But the basic format of the question feels like it'll work.
Yeah.
Hard to edit these because you can't see all the text at once. Okay. I can put in the. The dollar values.
Now. Would you have a link to the presentation in the survey?
We certainly could try that. I'm not, I hadn't planned on that.
I'm just thinking, cause something like, cause when we started the survey, we didn't have that information. So I'm just thinking that now.
Which information? The?
That we didn't have this, the presentation.
Oh, right.
That presentation, right? Like.
Yeah. I developed the survey as the presentation was sort of coming together. And thinking about. You know, the kinds of questions I've heard around the board table, but. Yeah. So in terms of the presentation, I'm not sure if it really offers much more information than. This, but we certainly could. I just was trying to make it a short commitment, but we could also, we could say, you know, there's no need to look at the presentation, but if you'd like to see what our presentation was, here's a link.
Sure.
You want to do that?
Yeah. I mean, I think it just, it's one more way to get it out there, right?
Okay. Um. Looking for where to put that. So I'm just in the intro section.
Maybe page one, I would think is where it would go.
Yeah. And I'll take a stab at it right now and then you guys can fix it as we talk. So on September 24th, the board. For the presentation.
So the link that, that I'm, maybe I'm not following the live one, but. I can't see, are you actually on the docs.google.com forms?
Yeah. Are you not able, is that not coming up for you?
No, it comes up, but I just can't see you editing it. Maybe, maybe I just have to refresh.
Oh, okay. I'm just up in that first section.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Let's see, maybe somebody else could. Heard a presentation about the scope for the bond and. So Jeremy, we're just editing this survey right now and right now we're in the first section. And there's a link in the minutes that I emailed you.
Yep. Yeah, I was like Jonathan said, so if you're editing it right now, I just opened that link and don't see the edits coming in, but.
Oh, okay.
It asked, it looked like I could request editing.
Oh, I. I've had it listed as collaborators, but let me see if I can. The settings for the forums are different than they are for.
You know, my issue might be that I, when I clicked into the link, it changed my Google account. So I need to go back, try to.
Oh.
In the, in the.
That might be part of the challenge. Yeah.
I'm trying to figure that out now.
I'm sorry.
How many accounts do you have, Jonathan? I've got at least three that I know of. So it's a guessing game, which one I'm in.
I think only, only my.
For some reason you guys are not, I thought that I had you all as collaborators at an earlier thing. It seemed like you were, okay. So Jonathan, Christina, Christine. Okay, that should do it. But you'll probably have to be signed into QSD one.
Yes, got it. It told, everything changed.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
All right. So. The board heard a presentation.
Pretty good. Yeah.
From, I don't know. How does that seem? I think one trick is I don't think I can put a link in the. Document. So I think I'll just need to, we'll need to type it out.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other question that comes up in there is when should we have the survey open till? So our next meeting is on the eighth, which will be a Wednesday. I think last time what we did is we just had it open through the. Monday or Tuesday, and then I just, you know, quickly push the button to make a, you know, results sheet and. Email that at the last minute. Do you guys want to say September 6th or September 7th?
If you feel like you can get the information collated in time, I think the seventh is fine.
Yeah. I mean, at the level that I collated it last time, I was not going to try to do any analysis on my own or anything like that. So, so we'll just do until September 7th.
Then the plan would be to look at it as a board on the eighth at the meeting or to have folks prep it. Or prep by viewing it.
I think. A little of both. I did feel like after our last survey, one thing, we didn't really spend much time discussing it as a board. And so maybe it would be. Better to try to make more time to discuss the survey. Just as a way to sort of acknowledge that we're using it. But. But I wouldn't. I don't see much value in having us as laypeople try to do sophisticated interpretation of what we're. Getting.
Yeah, it's safest not to do that, I think. And I think the seventh is good also because. The sixth. Being Labor Day, a lot of people away from their computer, so we can give them a notice on. The morning of the seventh, last chance.
Okay.
Now that you're back at work.
And then I guess I can mention in the leadership report that week that I'll be sending something out Monday morning, I mean, Wednesday morning too. So people know to look for it. One thing that would be different about this survey from the last one is that we might have a lot of comments. So last time it was a three-page, you know, set of charts. It was very easy to review quickly. To do a thoughtful review of this one might take quite a bit longer, but.
Well, do you feel like we need like a, like. At that meeting, can we say, you know, here's a first glance of the results, you know, I know none of us had have had a chance to. Process it all, because there is going to be a lot of information. It's seven-page survey. We don't, I don't necessarily feel like we need to have distilled all of those responses into our action. On the eighth, do you necessarily?
No, I think it would be useful. It would be useful to be able to. I think, well, I actually think that to a large degree, the questions that are on this are. Those are the answers I think the board is actually most interested in right now. Like that's the kind of stuff we need to understand as we try to figure out what the scope is going to be. Individual comments to a large degree. I would think are not going to be as useful in this, in this moment, but I might be wrong. But I think if, you know, if people end up saying we're only, if we get 90% of people say we only will spend $40 million, like that's. That's something we would want to have by the eighth. And if it's 50/50, that will also be something for people to incorporate as we try to narrow things down. So. So I guess the question is like, do, do you feel like we need to give the board time, more time than just one day to read the results before the meeting on the eighth?
I guess I just don't really see it's possible with Labor Day backing up unless we have, because I'm, maybe a lot of people will be answering this over the long weekend, but I doubt it. And so that kind of like. I don't know. I mean, I guess that makes the cutoff on Friday and that's just a really short. Maybe it's better to have a short amount of time to do a survey because. You see, oh, I got two weeks to do this. I don't need to worry about it now. And then you put it off, but. It's, that seems like a really tight timeline for people to complete it and for us to get the outreach. To have it, you know, do on the third.
All right. Jeremy, yeah, how do you feel?
I subscribe to the, the theory of expanding workload that Jonathan is sort of like alluding to that if you give two weeks, people will take. 13 days and do it on the 14th and that if you give six days, people will do it on, you know, day five. So. You know, I, I, you know, would welcome some opportunity to sort of like, you know, as a board member to be able to process it before the morning of the, the meeting. So I think that, you know, board, board interpretation is probably. A valuable. We're putting out the survey so that we can look at it, right? So we don't get to look at it before September 8th, sort of like renders the survey a little bit of like a formative act versus actually reflecting on it. So I would sort of, I'd be a favor of a shorter window and more time.
Okay. So what window, what seems like a good day to close it then?
When it will go out today-ish, tomorrow-ish.
Real soon, it'll probably be tomorrow, but I'm, I might do it today, but I don't know if we'd be able to publicize it today yet.
That's a full, full weekend and then a full week. And, you know, I think to close it on the third.
Is that Friday?
That's the Friday, yeah, before the long weekend. Or even the fourth, you know, so that it gives another Saturday if folks are around, but.
What specifically are we voting on in the eighth that we would need this process by that time that we wouldn't be voting on in the next board meeting?
I don't think there would be a vote on this on the eighth, but I do think it'd be nice to have. Like to leave the meeting on the eighth, knowing what we're going to vote on. On the 15th. So, you know, we do that with a budget often where the day, the meeting before, we really actually kind of finalize it and I'll get on board and then. You know, if something crops up, that's possible, but that's kind of, I was hoping that by the end of the eighth, we'd all kind of know where we were going.
And I, I think, Tari, the, that might need to happen because if we have to like formally finalize a warning like we would for the budget. We need to, I mean, I, you know, sometimes Michelle can do that on the fly. We can edit it and post it and see what it looks like.
Yeah.
So the only issue I would raise with the timeline of closing that survey on that Friday is that. The timeline that was approved last night does say the seventh. There's always the possibility of like. Collating what's there and through the fourth and then. Show, sharing that with the group and then sharing it out again. I mean, I don't know how much is going to change in a couple of days. But if, if, you know, if this group is willing to say that we thought Friday was better, or you're willing to, I'm, I support that either way.
I'm comfortable actually tinkering that if we kind of feel like that is the better way to go. I, I think we're, we're still very much. Following the spirit of, of what people have, you know, indicated that there weren't, you know, there were zero comments. So I'm okay if you feel like that would make a difference.
I guess I just want, I worry a little bit that we'll be open to the, some of the criticism we got from the last survey, which was like, we didn't. Have an opportunity for people who aren't like electronically connected to answer it and there wasn't enough time and people felt left out. If, especially if we're, we're, you know, giving people a week to answer it, but. But it's, you know, this is, this is splitting hairs to some degree. I think either way has benefits and drawbacks.
Well, yeah, I think even more so, the time to sort of collate and analyze non-digital would require more, more, you know. Lead time versus, you know, closing on the seventh and then saying, we're going to turn that information around. It's like, I see both sides of that. If the window is shorter, it's harder to get, you know, paper feedback or whatever, but it's also harder to organize that. You know, 24 hour period.
Yeah. I mean, one thing I'll just share is that Sarah said when they did have paper stuff out for. The balloting around the new name for Brookside, and I think they got one or two, it was. Or maybe even zero. It was very, very small.
Yeah, minus zero.
I feel like maybe we should just say Friday, the fourth, and it can be midnight or whatever. Or third, is that what it was?
Friday's the third, yeah.
And then that gives me time to send it out to the board on Saturday. It also actually gives the newspapers time to look at the results if they want to. And we will just try to, and there is, you know, there's a lot, it's hard, there's a lot going on in these first seven days of school, but actually parents are filling out a lot of forms right now. So maybe we can kind of piggyback on that.
And it, and it should give us the opportunity to get it in the first week's. Newsletter.
Yeah, the newsletters. Yeah. So if I can finalize it tonight in text, I can send them all links tomorrow and I've got to write a blurb and stuff like that. Okay. So how about if we tentatively for, and then if we, by the end of the meeting, feel like we want to change it, we can come back and change it. But are we basically okay with the third?
Or it's good.
Okay. Um. So question, section two, that was how important do you feel the condition of a school campuses to everybody feel pretty good about that? Oh, so what about this linear scale thing? Now, can I switch the linear scale one to five? Oh, I think I, I think I can. What if I do? Oh, no, just you're at a. There to one.
Yeah.
I can't flip it. So Jeremy, I was saying that Lisa thought we should flip the linear scale. I think I was trying to lead with the positive. So. But it is kind of counterintuitive that like a one would be yay bond and a five would be no bond.
Yeah, I, I, I see her point and I feel like it is, you know, slightly more intuitive to have. You know, how important is it to attracting families to live here? And then you just, let's say you didn't have those guides and you just had one to five. And you said, it's really important. You probably answer a five. That would be what you'd probably think if you didn't have those guides. But if it's a real pain in the neck to switch everything around, I don't think it's that important. I think people will read it carefully enough to be able to, to get that correct.
I think it shouldn't be very hard. Do you all feel like I should maybe flip that around?
I feel like I'm volunteering you for more work by saying yes, but I do sort of understand the. I understand the logic behind the, the, you know, Lisa pointing that out.
Yeah.
They might be able to do it right while, right during this meeting, actually.
Sure. Yeah. It's just cutting.
Yeah, I'll take, I'll take a shot at it while you guys are talking. We'll see if. If I'm making progress or not.
All right. So. Section three, timing for bonds. So this is one that we had a little back and forth about, you know, whether we really wanted to go with this. I tried to incorporate some. Well, Christine helped edit it down to be a little less alarmist and then, but it feels like it may kind of hold together. What do you guys think?
Yeah. I mean, the one thing, you know, one of the things I took away from last night was that, you know, if. When you start comparing the cost of a bond versus the cost of adding two to $3 million annually to our budget for some of these super necessary repairs. Like I don't think there's going to be a huge net difference.
Oh, it's going to be so much worse actually if we do it, because if we do it without the bond, then it goes toward our.
Right.
I think then it would go towards our student excess spending threshold. So I think it would be brutal on our budget if we didn't.
And, and we have the whole student waiting formula unknown hanging out.
Right. Yeah.
I think it's kind of getting people to understand it's not like bond or nothing. It's like bond or. You know, like pick, and, and that might be a longer range strategy in terms of trying to promote the bond and support for it, like. That, you know, it's not, it's, we're not, it's kind of. The lesser of two evils scenario rather than like just completely avoiding the cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one thing that, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to have both things on my screen. So I don't see the whole language on the middle one, but. Just like one of the things that I heard last night too, is that, you know, folks were sort of worried about the COVID bump in construction costs, you know, I. Doing a project here at my house right now and you know that lumber is coming down on the wholesale. That hasn't reached the retail value yet, like, you know, fires are still paying, but one thing that did come up was that we'd be. You know, we're out a bit and that is mentioned here, probably at least another year in terms of like when those bids would, would come in. So. You know, like delaying, skipping the bond and trying to, it almost seems like a little redundant in that. Like, you know, waiting, we're also waiting. So like delaying. Going for the bond right now would be waiting, right? In terms of like it delays where the, when the bid actually comes in. So waiting. It's like waiting and waiting, you know what I mean? I guess some way I'm trying to come up with a way to indicate that. If we did the bond right now and got approval, that there would be some time for perhaps the construction industry to level out as well, like naturally as part of the timeline here. So that folks don't get the impression that like the bid's going to come in in November, you know, right away if the vote were to go through as a yes. So. Hope that was clear. I know I went too long way to get there, but. I'm not sure how to change it. I guess that's what I'm saying. I just, I just, how do we make that clear that? It does say here, so we would not be locking in bids for another year or so.
Yeah. So it could get rid of the skip the bond, but I do feel like that's something I've heard so many people say. So I think in one of the things that maybe it's trying to do too much is like. You know, when you, you do, you, you've been working on something for a long time and so you've already eliminated all these possibilities. And then you, you say the idea to somebody new and they're like, well, have you considered this and that and the other thing? And so. This is like our way of saying, we have considered this, you know, like, and you should know that. So, but maybe that's, maybe the survey isn't the place to do that. I don't know. But if the question.
Yeah. I guess what I'm thinking is that like people probably aren't informed enough about construction timelines. Maybe that, like, I'm going to take this answer. Section three with a grain of salt, right? Like, because are people really informed about how contract bidding works? So I get your point. I'm just, then I guess the question is, is there a, a place to make this point? Without attaching it to a question. You know what I'm saying? Like an answer for the public, but.
Christine, go ahead.
I was almost thinking, I wonder if you should take out that mid, you know. Because, you know, the issue is, is that if, even if. So if, if, you know, operating on the assumption that we'd start chipping away at repairs, we're still dealing with, there's no, there's no avoiding the issue of. Increased costs, right? So whether we're starting to say like, well, we're going to take care of the roof. By putting in $2 million or $3 million into our budget, or we're going to take care of the roof as part of the bond. The roof needs to be taken care of. So whatever the costs of construction are at the time that we move forward, like. If, if we start to say like, well, but let's just let the roof leak for another year in the hopes that construction prices come down. Like, I don't think we're really. That's not really an option. So I almost think it's like, take out that middle option. And then. I mean, it's, you know, for me, it's really the choices between doing the bond and doing everything at once. and doing everything at once, or not doing the bond and chipping away. I don't think we have the luxury of saying, well, let's wait for prices to come down and and I don't really think that it would be a good idea for our school board to get involved in the futures market.
I will say that, that, that phrase delay the bond is like, you know, skip the bond and delay the bond. I hear from people all the time. And so I think, um, what, it, it would be useful for us to know as a board, if 50% of the people say delay the bond, then that tells us that we need to educate people about how we cannot just keep waiting, right? So that, that might be something to think about. Like, some of this is our way of understanding what the community is understanding right now. And where we need to do public education. But maybe I, we could make that delay the bond a little more dramatic, you know? And ditto for that skip the bond, because, you know, part of it is we would probably lump up against the excess spending threshold.
That, yeah, I mean, Christine said, her solution is essentially like, like what I was getting at. I think that, that middle option is sort of gives the illusion that we can just say like, you know, well, just wait on some of these essential repairs. I, I'm almost like, I, I think leaving that skip the bond, it is a way for us to make it a little bit more dramatic, but then also get a read on like, you, you know, do folks really understand the the nature of the repairs that are necessary at this point, which see with such a bulk of that on value anyway, at this point, you know, uh, for the necessary repairs. So, I don't know. I, I just think that, that middle result, like Christine was saying, does sort of give some false impression that we can just kick the can down the road on some essential repairs.
I'd say just right, delay proposing the bond, if the construction industry levels out, buy more buckets to put in the hallways for the leaking roof.
And the thing of it is, like, even though, even if we're, it were the money to be approved by the voters, the board still, I think, has the the space to kind of delay it. I mean, that Burlington bond, the voters approved $74 million and, you know, now they're going to have to change, they're going to have to go back because they're changing the project, but I don't think there's any calendar attached to, the, the voters approved the money and it's really the board that decides when the money, um, gets allocated.
Okay. So if we simplify it to proposing the bond or skipping the bond, what, how much money, now that you've seen sort of the costs, what do you feel like we should say we would spend on that? Like, to me, I think what I used was, um, the, the repairs and the efficiencies and put those together. Um, that's what that 36 million comes from. Would, um, so if we were going to try, you know, we were like, okay, so if we're going to skip the bond and we're going to do repairs, how much money, what would we, like, what levels would we be trying to do? We just do the repairs? We do the efficiencies? We still need the addition at Harwood, at Crossit, right? Although I guess we, that complicates that.
I definitely would, right. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's, I think you're getting at some, some interesting questions here and that, that if you're going to ask this question, you have to make clear. You know, it would seem like it would make sense to make clear the implications in terms, you know, skipping the bond, the implications, both in terms of what that means in terms of reorganizing the district and also in terms of, um, running up against the, um, the spending, you know, the upper spending. What is that? What is it called again? The luggage?
Excess spending threshold.
Excess spending threshold and, and, and the costs that, that we would ensue through that. But, so that makes it a really tough question. It's already extremely wordy for, for two bullets, but it, it almost seems like it weren't. Maybe some of that, maybe, maybe at least just a couple of sentences in the upper section about the implication of skipping the bond, like one about the.
Yeah, we could put the text up there and then it's just two answers.
Yeah, I think that might make, I was just thinking the same thing, right? Make the, make the bullets a little simplified. Um, and put more of the text above in terms of what the implications are. I mean, if, if people are, I don't think the community really is, but if, if, if you had people in the community that were dead set against, you know, merging the middle school, then they might see this as, oh, here's my chance to, you know, torpedo that by clicking this bullet. So you don't necessarily want to advertise that necessarily. But at the same time, that would be kind of the, at least temporarily until we revote, that would be the implication because the, because the board vote did say contingent on a bond.
But that, you know, at the same time, there's all those unknowns, like, we don't know what our budgets, I mean, we might be up the spending threshold without a bond and without all this repair work. So.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess you could just say, you know, under the skip the bond thing, you know, you're likely to, um, exceed excess. You know, take on penalties for exceeding the excess annual spending threshold.
Yeah, um, this might sound super nippy and I apologize if folks feel that way, but when the second option where it's a skip the bond and try to chip away, I almost would encourage us to take out, try to, um, because it's sort of highlights that this is not a we would really love to fix the leaking roof. It's like, no, we've been told that, you know, this needs to happen. So we are going to have to chip away. You think the annual budget, the bond, can't sort of take care of that, the project as a whole. Sorry, I know you're updating as, as we're speaking already.
I just, do people agree with getting rid of try to? I agree with that. I, and I kill it.
I do too. Yeah. I think we're kind of at a point where like we, we've delayed so much of this work because the bond's coming and it's been like for so long, like I, I don't think we can not do it anymore.
You think runs, yeah, runs the risk is, um, I, I guess there is an uncertainty there, but I, would, would you want to like up that to like, say, say that it's likely? Runs the risk is probably fine.
No, it would likely, um, bump our spending, um, oh, would likely bump our spending past.
Yeah.
Yand, yeah. The excess spending threshold, which would further increase taxes. This would also mean, this would also probably mean that there were no opportunities. Oh, this would also eliminate opportunities to, um, improve like the whole, the educational alignment stuff.
Yeah, this would prohibit, this would also prohibit the educational alignment.
Align, uh, that would. This could get better.
Is it really, what's that term for like, when the choice is like essentially been made for you based on that Occam's razor? It's something like.
Or like Solomon.
Yes.
Now, in that sentence, are you also, are you also, are you lumping in the improvements to Cross at Brook as well? Should we make that broader? Or do?
It doesn't even get into Cross at Brook because, well, so I, in this case, it doesn't.
Right.
Uh, because I was just trying, like, we're kind of make the point that like, this stuff just gets more expensive and the longer we wait, the worse off we are. But it has, you know, I feel like the question.
We can leave Cross it out of it. I, I'm fine with that, you know, for the, for.
And also that does tangle it because then for the people who don't want to merge them, they might see a no vote as a way to avoid that. So we want to.
That's what I was, that's what I was worried about earlier.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah. It's fine. I, I, I mean, I think it, it is, I'm fine with that.
I don't think it's a guarantee.
The bond?
No, if it's, if there, if people, people, that necessarily a no vote is going to preclude ever merging the middle school.
No, 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 it doesn't. I, I agree. It's no guarantee, but it, but it would require another board action.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. But especially, yeah, just based on.
Okay. So let's just make these little bullets of the choices much shorter. Skip the bond.
Did I just do that? I don't think so.
In repairs, um, using annual budgets.
Very simple.
Okay. Um, that's the other thing about the, this, um, annual budget says would likely bump the spending. Uh, the approach would eliminate, I think, um, it would also mean even as it meant the state, the school was in a state of constant, um, construction mess for five years.
Now, maybe you're construction, now you're, that might be a little too far in my opinion. I mean, now, now it really looks like you're like twisting the knife, like also your kids are going to be living. Yeah, possibly. But I mean, you know, I, personally, I think it's a yeah, I personally think it's overstated, but other, I, I don't have to be the, I don't have a veto power in this group. So if other people like it.
One, well, one question is how much, how much money, I know this isn't exact, this is just like general, but what should, so right now we have two to three million, but we know that like those, um, the repairs and compliance was, how mu- how many millions was that?
Probably thirty six or something.
No, twenty four.
Together they're thirty six, but so it's twenty four just for the repairs and compliance part. So, um,
Yeah. So at three million, we've got eight, eight years of, uh, and, and so, I mean, just based on projects, I would assume that some would be higher, some would be lower years, you know, you'd have to sort of, you know.
And then some of those years, like that parking lot situation, that was like an efficiency. So throw in that money.
Right. So let's say would be adding two to three million for the next decade. That gets, that's actually just twenty to thirty. It's not even everything, but.
Yeah, that's fair, I think.
And we're clearly working in very general numbers, right? So, um, and I will, I'll just get a number for Michelle to.
Yeah, you could probably just base it on 2.5 million, right?
Sure. Yeah, that sounds good.
We know 200,000, every thousand is about a penny on the tax rate.
Yeah.
So you're, you're talking till 10 to 12 cents anyway.
Right. And that's actually based on the cost of a bond, some of these, I think that's the $40 million bond cost, basically.
Yeah. Um, it's kind of like apples to oranges and you're not getting.
Except that one gets us what we really want and one doesn't.
I will note that one is 10 and the other is 20 years of expenditure. So there is that difference.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I, but I do, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of, of the skip the bond option.
All right. So, let's see. So maybe one of you could just smooth that thing out a little further and we'll just keep talking.
The timing for bond section, is that what you mean by that thing?
Yeah, I guess so. I feel like those paragraphs need a little bit, maybe, or I can do it later too. It's okay. If you like.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So number four, within the plans being considered are several opportunities that our educators believe. So.
My first question is just, uh, uh, sorry to jump in, but, um, do we want the pro bond to be number five again?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll do that switch right now.
Okay. So, and so one thing that I think is interesting is that new gym is actually $65 a year for $350,000 out. Isn't that kind of surprising?
Uh, do you think that's a lot or a little? I think it seems kind of like a, a little. I don't know. What do you think?
It seems kind of a little, like, I think a lot of families, like for 65 bucks, sure, but I don't know.
I mean, if you think about it, like, is it, is it the difference between getting the sports bus and having to pick your kid up?
Right.
Saving that much in gas plus time.
Oh, yeah.
It's a little, and also I keep remembering for, you know, that about 66%, I believe you said last night, are receiving some sort of, you know, tax concession, I guess. So, you know.
Yeah.
Um, and I just, the only thing that I would wonder, I don't want to make a statement that's not true, but it did sound like, um, it was said last night that it's not unlike most schools in the region, but it was believed to be the only school in the region that did not have.
I don't think it's the only, but it is one of very few, um, because there, I think, in, we might be among the only for schools our size or something, but um, I wouldn't want to go quite so far as to say not the only, or that we're the only, but there are very few. Let's see. And was that? All right. So I see you're still changing. Okay. Thank you for.
Yeah, I'm working on it. It's a little, for some reason, it's like, it's, this last one's harassing me. I don't know why.
Oh, it looks like it's switched back to multiple choice. Like, go back to the linear scale thing.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. That must have, there was a missed click there or something. Yeah, except I lost all my labels now. Okay, good. I'm going to just copy this and do it, and do a notepad and then I will, um, copy it over. So meanwhile, I, I, I know how to get there from here now.
Okay. So we're okay with that question then? We're ready to go with that? Okay. And then, um, bond scope. So this was one that's kind of gotten amended a couple of times. How do we feel like that's working for us right now?
Well, okay. So I, I mean, I guess the question is, should we use those, should we say, I mean, should we say $30 million? Which is, which is the, isn't that what you just said, the needed repairs were?
Well, it's like, well, the repairs and efficiencies are thirty four or thirty six, I think. But one thing about these efficiencies is a lot of them are like, they're not just efficiencies, they're things that are basically would need to be repaired 10 years from now. So it's sort of they're the end of life things, you know, like it's a lot of, so like the roofing thing was kind of a good example. Technically doesn't need to be replaced right now, but in 10 years it will. So basically a year or two after the bond is finished, we would need to come up with another $300,000 to do it. So a lot of the efficiencies of things like that. Go ahead.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's probably a silly cut. Like, I'm just to, to then to go back in and say, we're going to marry, you know, sister, these two sections of the roof.
Right.
Yeah. So, but I just don't know whether, is that, is it entirely accurate to say needed repairs? Or should you say needed repairs and, and of life?
Or efficiency upgrade or?
Right, efficiencies. If we're talking about end of life stuff, then.
Yeah, it's the, so that it, it's kind of a combination. It's, it's basically the stuff that's not emergency, but it's urgency. It's time sensitive, but it's not urgent, maybe.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I personally don't know what repairs and efficiency means. You know, efficiency doesn't carry much weight for me there. But maybe, maybe it carries weight to other people.
No, I, I agree. I think it's a tricky term. That's why I kind of said, I just lumped it into needed repairs, um, as a way, as a shorthand, but.
Could you say something like would cover the cost of past due repairs and, um, and like, and somehow kind of go words down, but, and repairs that will be needed within the next, you know, have been indicated to be needed within the next five to 10 years.
Could you just say past due and expected repairs?
Yeah. Yeah. Near term.
I don't know. That might be a weak too, but. I keep it simple, kind of just trying to keep it short.
Fifty million, that, so that's sort of the, so the cut would cover, and we could, I could, um, switch it to all of the above. Would cover, should I do that? All of the above plus, or should we say what each thing is?
No, I think that's fine. I, I mean, I. No, I think that's fine. I, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I think if, with fifty million, it's pretty clear that it's covering what's in the forty million. I don't think you need to also say and expect repairs, and, I mean, you could if you want to, but you could, you could simplify it just to say, would cover the above, yeah, that's perfect, above repairs, yep, I like that. By the way, I have a meeting at, uh, one, so.
Yeah, sorry, this is taking longer than I thought.
That's okay, but I'm just gonna, I just, I, if the, I just wanted to let you know, I'm gonna be jumping off at that time.
Okay, so, um, this would cover all of the above. And, um, would cover all of the above, um, a complete. Add a second gym and replace the track, um. And, um, make the full addition. CBMS, okay. I don't know, I made that up.
Do we still need the seventy million option, based on the number last night? It was at fifty-nine and change?
We don't really need it. It, it was more like, you know, sort of to say that we're not, we're not spending as much as we could. We also could put in something about fifty-five million, which is sort of a middle place between those two, but I was sort of just doing bulk numbers.
Yeah, I think that is clear. It's forty, fifty, sixty. Then, my question about redundancy, so folks can only choose one answer for this.
Yeah, so they can pick one now. And that's why I changed it, was to try to address that, um.
I was just saying at the beginning of the call that psychologically, sometimes I have trouble selecting the bullet that has all the bells and whistles, like, you go to a car dealer and they're like, also get the, you know, the rust proofing, also get the, you know, he, I, I always, um, trim it down a little bit, it's, you know, and so, so, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm not an expert on survey psychology, but I, I just, you know.
You're saying having a, uh, over the moon option might help us get people to sixty?
Yeah, basically. I think it would help me psychologically if I was going through this. I know, it's just, because you're like, oh, look how frugal I'm being, I just trimmed. Ten million I got in my pocket I didn't have yesterday.
It's pretty transparent, though. We're not like.
Yeah. No.
Shall we leave it or shall we take it away? Just leave it?
I'd leave it, personally.
We can just harass me about it for the rest of my time on the board, when people start mocking me. Hopefully, they won't be angry, okay? So then, the other thing would be to move the additional thoughts or comments, um, up higher, probably.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't know why, necessarily. It seems like it's a natural place, because you kind of want people to be led through. Because as we said, the purpose of the survey at the beginning was, was sort of twofold, it's partially to educate as well as to um, get feedback on, because now they kind of have a sense of, you know, what the numbers are and what they entail. Um, I mean, I don't, uh, I don't know, I guess I'm just not clear what, about the criticism, I was thinking about this, I don't know what the criticism is on this.
Well, we could put it just before the demographic information, because it might.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I was, I didn't want people who are feeling like, why, this is taking forever, you know, I, I didn't want them to give up and.
That's a good point.
And not.
That nice little bar that tells you how far along you are, you know, you're so close.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have no objection to moving it above the demographic.
That's a good point. Yeah, that would be the place to put it.
Okay.
And, and do you think it's not clear when it says, do you have any additional thoughts? Like, I mean, it seems pretty clear. Do you have?
Yeah, I think she must have just not seen it, but.
No.
I'm happy to rephrase it.
Yeah, uh, well, it says additional thoughts are, so it's a little redundant, additional thoughts or comments. Do you have any additional thoughts or comments to say? You know, share any additional thoughts on, um, on the bond here or something? Um, any, any opinions that weren't captured in the survey? This is micromanaging, it's so unimportant. Just move it up, and I think it's fine.
Okay. Why is it, I feel like I've moved it up now three times. Um, why is it still not? All right, one more time here. Move section. Out there, I forgot to state it, okay. That should do it. Okay, cool. So there's a little more smoothing, but it sounds like you all feel pretty ready for this to go out.
Yep.
Sure.
Thanks. Um, all right. It is twelve fifty-six. Jonathan, I know you have to go, but if you guys could stay for a few more minutes and we chat about, like, either, may, at least the video thing, um, that seems like something that if we want to do, we need to get working on, um.
Someone have initial thoughts about the two proposals?
My only thought was not, not awesome, which was, I think with the rearc, because we already have a contract with them, we could kind of move forward with them logistically easier, like, we don't need to do an RFP. I think if it's over fifteen thousand, we're supposed to do an RFP. So the other project is over fifteen thousand. Um, unless we bought one video at a time. But because we already have a deal with Rearc, I don't think we really need to do that. And there, it's kind of like, the idea would be, it's just, we're just expanding the scope of services that we're asking them to do. But. I.
Have we seen videos that they, that they've produced, that Rearc has produced?
There's just that one that's in the link.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I didn't go through that, sorry.
It's nice.
And how much was it for them to do it?
Well, they said thirty-four, um, but that was, I think they were thinking like one longer video, so I have a feeling we could
Trim it.
Sit it, sit down with them a little bit more and, and talk through, you know, what we want, um, and if it really needs to cost thirty-four thousand, um.
Yeah, I mean, the other one was twenty-three.
Yeah, and was that for one or was that for two? I can't remember now. This, this was nice, um, Sam Rosenberg reached out to these guys for us, um, I think he knows them from his previous life, um, and he said he felt like the estimate seemed pretty realistic. Um, what did he say to me?
I think it's for one, was the Rearc for two?
Yeah, so, no, we are, Rearc wasn't a specific, um, so, but I also think the Rearc one isn't a two-minute video, so Sam said, um, this quote is to produce two to three minutes, oh, no, he says the quote is to produce two, two to three minute videos featuring four total interviews. It assumes the interviews and accompanying video footage will all be shot within one twelve-hour day at one location. I think there are ways to bring the cost down, but the ballpark feels right to me. Um, so maybe that is two videos.
Yeah, sounds like, yeah, sorry, I didn't read this over.
Yeah, figure out what we're comparing it to. I mean, in the long term, if a video like that is the difference between, you know.
Seriously.
It could save us money, and it's kind of chump change.
No, I, no, I think that, um, I think these videos make a huge difference. I mean, I feel like I teared up at one of the Winuski ones that I watched, like, just seeing those cute kids and, oh, you know, so. Telling you, midlife is hard for women.
Yeah. Don't you have kids?
On that note, see you soon.
I'm still working on my emotional development, Christine, despite having a kid.
But like, it's really like easier, you're like, we used to make fun of my mom.
Yeah, yeah. It, it happens occasionally. Um, yeah, I mean, I do, I agree, Christine, I think I made a comment same, sort of along the same line, and it, it felt like it was like, you know, point zero one percent or something like that of the, of the whole shebang here, so, I mean, I think if, if Sam, I mean, I don't know Sam, but if he feels like it's a good estimate, I mean, the only thing about that is if it's another hoop to jump through as far as getting, um, the money approved.
Yeah, what do you remember about that, Christine?
I, you know, I don't know, because if it's like architectural services, we don't need to do an RFP, is it architectural services? I mean, Michelle could answer that question.
Okay.
For sure.
One thing is, you know, the folks that Sam brought to us are in Brooklyn, so obviously, they're not here. Um, the folks at Rearc are here, um, I don't know how much that matters, missing it, seeing how it really does.
Right, but Rearc also knows the project.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and I mean, maybe if we found out more about whether it, what, more of the specifications of what they were proposing would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so then, it seems like, what questions do I need to find out?
What, yeah, what exactly is included in the thirty? And what are the opportunities to trim, I think, too, would be.
And so, we talked about, it might be helpful to have like a sense of a scale or a scope that we ideally have, so I think before we talked about, you know, one or two-minute video, um, we've got, we've got several things that we want to think about, we've got the degradation of hardwood, like, what, what kind of shape is it in right now? But there's also, you know, the excitement of the building project, and then there's the building project to cross it, and there's the building project at hardwood, so maybe we should do like one that's about the needed repairs and one that's about the educational alignment and the addition at hardwood, does that seem good, or? What do you think? I feel like we, I just need a little more guidance about.
Yeah, can I, what's our role as a committee in this, in terms of like the relationship with the larger board, like, are we just, have we been given like, hey, figure out what we want in this video, or is this, and I, I assume that we were bringing back to the board? Just, just curious, like, what the, what the level of feedback will be?
I don't really know.
I, you know, I, I definitely liked, and we certainly including the idea of like what we're getting out of CrossFit, I think, you know, as excited and, as Laurie and Meg are, you know, Dwayne and Tom are super excited, too, and I don't want to leave that out, right, and so like, sort of, I think that what that also emphasizes is that this is a district-wide asset, not just, you know, like, just for high school kid or whatever, you know what I mean, like, it really brings it down to like, even like fifth and sixth grade parents and fourth grade parent who are like thinking about their kids going up to CrossFit soon, you know, and that really would be, um, a big selling point for folks who, for high school, you know, that's like way off for them or something like that, right, and so, um, I do think that's important. I think having a video that's a standalone, like, about the, sort of the doom and gloom, might be a little risky without like bringing it around, you know, at some level, too, to like, and just stand to gain, so.
And that's just quickly looking at those two proposals, they, the Rearc one has like double the interviews that the other proposal has, at least double the interviews, and they're also working to integrate some of the, um, TruX Collins, and then there's that social media management piece, too, which.
Yeah.
You know, so there, there's a, there is more there, and I do wonder how long, if, if they're doing, you know, like ten or twelve interviews instead of the four, how long are they looking at?
Okay.
There, I think there might be room to trim it.
Yeah, so if it's an eight-minute video on their mind, can we get it down to three, and can we ditch the social media thing, and, you know, maybe that's important. I'm not a big social media person, so that's not on my priority list, but I know for a lot of people.
Well, you know.
Get their information, right?
I don't know, do we need them to do two public pres- presentations, um?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think we just need a video, really, that we can.
For that, this is, you know, twelve interviews. They're gonna go to CrossFit and hardwood. They have the drone video. TruX.
I don't really think we need a drone, but.
Right, but maybe, I mean, yeah, we might not, we might, and, and is TruX Collins going to, like, I don't know if they're gonna coordinate with an outside company, like, that could get tricky.
Yeah, I think the simpler we do it, the faster we can get it done, and speed is gonna be important. Um, okay, so, what exactly is included in the estimate? What are opportunities to trim? So I feel like we think we're looking for maybe one longer video, like, three to five minutes, right?
Yeah.
Three to four minutes?
Yeah, I mean, what's the, when does this tension span start waiting?
Four seconds, I think. Or I should just say what? I wasn't paying attention. No, um, okay, so, we want a little something about repairs needed, but then we're gonna brighten up the story with this great educational alignment up and CrossFit Brooks stuff, does that seem?
Right, and that, like, E, you know, that E, the renderings and other materials, that kind of speaks to what like, I think somebody said that, what Lisa was asking for last night.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know how we come up with an answer to that one, but maybe that, um.
I think the easiest.
Feedback on that, right?
But sometimes the easiest way is also to see other, somebody else's before and after pictures. I mean, it's, it's hard to look at hardwood and, and think that after won't be better than, you know. You hate to say it, but like, the black tile, like, the interior classrooms, the really super tight labs to, you know, to say, like, you can't imagine how, what the improvements will look like. If, if you know what it looks like now.
Right. Okay. So, there's, I don't feel like we've got anything finished, but that's, we're still.
Also agree with the drone, you know, if that ends up being an expense that's worth cutting, drone shots are pretty cool, but we're really talking about the inside feel of the building, too, right, you know, you're not gonna see roof leaks from a drone shot and whatnot, you're not gonna see the new atrium from a drone shot or whatnot, so I think, you know, there's an opportunity to, to trim there, I'd certainly support that, too.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we've covered the survey, we've pushed the video down a little further, um, public events and, um, FAQ. Maybe the FAQ next, because that's something that we could kind of start drafting, um.
Or at least like brainstorming what we want on that FAQ.
Yeah, um.
Certainly something, or, you know, I, I can imagine the, the question that's sort of in the survey there, why don't we just chip away at this, right, like, that, that is a question that will come up, why don't we just do two to three, but whatever, so.
Okay.
About that, that's sort of a top, top question that might get asked.
So, we can start a Google Doc, um, and maybe start putting questions in stuff in, does that sound good?
Yeah, and then I was even thinking from, once we, you know, feel like we have all the questions, maybe we can assign them to different people, so nobody gets stuck writing the whole document, and we each contribute like one or two questions worth.
Okay.
And then we can all, you know, collectively edit as well.
Okay, that sounds great. And then the Q and A stuff, um, do we want to try to pick some dates for that?
Well, it's gonna be this format, uh, virtual, the same as the Monday night type thing.
Yeah, that's, I mean, certainly, at least partly virtual, but, I mean, the virtual is so darn easy for people to come.
Totally, yeah.
Well, we have it, one, one second right before the bond vote date, within, one session after the bond is more late September, and one within that ten days of voting.
Okay, so, one is, okay, so I just have to pick some dates. What about the, the tour thing? How do we do that?
Board members?
What kind of, what should we do? I mean, I, it's a good point that a lot of people really have no idea what it's like inside the school.
For board members or the general public?
Yeah. Yes.
So I would hope like that video. The re-arc proposal actually talks about going through the different schools and including current conditions and some of the problems there.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as the board, I would suggest. You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to think how much time we used last time around, but like before a meeting, the first 30 minutes of a meeting.
Isn't that, it's in our, our own manual that says certainly reach out to principals and ask for a. Time. I mean, I, I'm in the school, so I don't know that I, I feel like I need to use another 30 minutes of my time, certainly seeing every inch of that school, so. But I think if individual board members have an interest, they should. Read the book, you know, and feel comfortable reaching out to their, the administrators and ask for some time. And I do think the video is, that's the intent of the video, the way I see it is to get a, you know, an eyes on the inside of that building for the public.
Public at least.
Yeah, I feel like it would also actually honestly be good to do it during the day when the kids are there because. A school is so different when it's filled with children, you know, and. So many parents don't have any kids in the high school, so they just, like, they don't, the board, they don't know yet. Would that make?
I mean, it's like last night I was coming home from our meeting. You know, part of the reason you join the board and work on something like this is because you want to benefit your own kids. And I'm like. I started working, right, the hopes that it would benefit my oldest, and now I'm going, well, construction will be done by the time my third is.
I was doing the math on 2025, trying to figure out where I was going to be in the next.
My daughter will be graduating at the height of, my, my youngest will be graduating that year, so she will just have the construction shit mess, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, my daughter will be going into, she'll be going into her junior year. And so like I've spent all this time and my youngest is the only, I mean, I have four kids that are eight years apart, like that's how long this process takes. And, you know, people don't realize that.
So I think the idea, in some ways, I love the idea of the kids being in school. At the same time, I'm thinking of who, who has less experience in the school. It would be like, you know, Kelly and she has. Oh, she has a job that she can't leave midday. Tim has some flexibility, but he already uses a lot of it for all the other stuff he has to do. Who else wouldn't have as much?
Well, Marlena, who knows?
Marlena probably doesn't, yeah, because her oldest is only in eighth grade. I'm not sure what her day schedule is like.
You know, Lisa.
Yeah, she has some days that work, so. All right, maybe I will, okay, I know, I'll start by reaching out to all the board and see who wants a tour.
Yeah, I'm definitely familiar and I've seen the tour in the hallways.
Okay. Okay, we're good then. I feel better about that. Um, and then, so we're going to not worry about a public tour then at this time?
I think it's a logistical, I would, it's a big lift for the administration right now. I think it would be asking a lot, just given where things are at and.
Okay.
I hope, I hope that, you know, I think we emphasize with Reark or whoever the videographers end up being that really this is. It's a component of the video that we're really hopeful, you know, is, is, is big, big feature of it is a tour of the current structure and then a lot of, you know. Hopes and dreams.
Yeah, and, and going through that, the, the building assessment, it's long, but there's, there's plenty of pictures.
Well, and actually, it's, you only have to read 15 or 20 pages to get the gist. The rest of it is like minutia reports and stuff, so.
But it's, it's got issues.
Yeah. Um, okay, so. One last thing, we have this like stakeholder. Things. I had a couple of. I had, Lisa wanted to add a couple of things to it, and then I had one other idea too, but I'm looking for my notes for the original list.
You know, some, some of these stakeholder groups, like that might be where we want to do like tours. To focus groups, right? Like people that can speak to other people in the community rather than just the general public. That, that might be easier to manage.
Yeah.
I have the list. It was in the, from the packet last night, the, the, I can read it if that's. Rotary. Chamber of Commerce. Revitalizing Waterbury. WDEV. Select boards. On the MRV Planning District. And there's a couple PC slash DRB.
And we might, I mean, some of that actually also might be as easy as like pushing out the video. You know, and then I'm even thinking like, well, then we can start adding some of like the. Daycares and the preschools around here, right? This is again, that before you know it, this is your kid's school.
Yep.
And I was also thinking, actually, the teachers slash union, like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Really, and it's, so.
It's about like farmer's market and sitting there with an Apple iPad and just letting the video replay. I'm just thinking, you know, like, where are people at, you know? Farmer's Market was hopping last weekend. Goodman guy just showed up, Christine.
Oh, yeah, you got another project going on?
Yeah, always projects.
So in terms of the stakeholder outreach, like how, what is a, what is a practical scope for that? So basically. I think you were just saying now, like. Just send a letter, sort of send a personalized letter, right, a personalized email. All right, I'm coughing just a second.
It's just, I have a different meeting, work-related meeting yesterday. So everyone has to justify every cough they cough now for the rest of our, at least the remainder of the decade. No, I swear, it was just a little bit lynch.
Yeah, I, I got a role in like five minutes too as well. I have an appointment.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's like a personalized note and the, the link to the video and saying, you know, please share this with your, your. You know. Your group. If you, if you believe in it or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, they, they certainly have the option. I think it's just a way of like, we put it on our website, whatnot. It's just yet another contact point for. For the community, you know, just people belong to different groups and associate with different groups that aren't on our website.
I don't think I'm going to recover before, in the meeting. Not COVID, I have been tested. Embarrassing when I got this in like a restaurant. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
But we got a lot, I think, so thanks.
Yeah. Feels good.
Do we need another meeting? Probably, but not yet.
Probably after the next board meeting.
Yeah.
Some point.
Yep.
But I think we'll have time to warn it because it'll be probably between the two board meetings.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, have a good afternoon.
Feel better.
Yeah.
Bye.